This is the address.
Okay.
All good.
I was gonna say, just pop back.
You see the graveyard that was down there, Greg? You see the graveyard?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Abandon cemetery regulations and you.
Procedure stream is live.
Jamie, everyone's here. He has to leave.
Right.
Is that live enough for skepticism?
The APA, you can put that stuff on their website. You're the guy. You're the guy. Living dead. Seems everybody's back?
Yeah.
All right, so are y'all ready to jump in on administration and procedures?
I'll start away from Andrea.
He's gone.
Oh, he left. Okay, let's jump in.
Yeah, I'm leaving.
I didn't realize you wasn't coming back, so never mind. That's great.
All right, so the good news is we're not gonna cover all of the chapters, only the ones highlighted in blue. So administration and procedures is a good bridge. So we're done with most of zoning and we are going to move on to subdivision, which will now be called land development. Land development, sorry. And so the procedures code, or the procedures chapters, kind of mirror each other in both. And so what we're gonna talk about are the procedures themselves, rules of interpretation, definitions, and new requirements. We revamped everything to try to make it a little bit simpler for people to interact with and deal with. We don't have a top 10 list for everything, so we only had six changes with, or I guess that's seven really, major changes for procedures. Consolidated common workflow, which should simplify it, and we'll see what that looks like in the long run. And then also new and revised procedures. We'll talk about what those specific are, because we've added a couple that should help both with your burden and with staff's hopefully. We're gonna talk about the planning commission's role, which I hope will be meaningful, and you all will see exactly what you're gonna be doing differently or thinking about. And then rules of measurement and how we've tried to simplify that. Consolidated and revised definitions, which we've just touched briefly on. Consolidated application submittal requirements, which we've tried to both simplify and make more flexible over time. And then technical studies, which we'll talk about very briefly at the end. So consolidated procedures for the common workflow. Basically, all of the parts for each procedure have the same framework. And so it has a purpose, so it explains what the procedure is for. And then it just goes through each one of these steps as notice required, what are the standards for a decision, you know, what are the record-keeping requirements. But basically, it's designed so that if you get used to the way it's organized, they're all pretty much organized the same way. And now all the procedures are generally located with whatever the topic is. And so now they're gonna all be in one subchapter, they'll all be together. And we have a list of them there on the right in that chart. And so, let's see.
The difference was just the table there. Those are the land development code procedures.
Right, right, right. Okay. Yes. And so this is, you know, this kind of simple summary table that we generally do at the beginning of a chapter, and it shows who decides what. And so what the authority is. You don't necessarily even have to read through, you know, the code to understand, but you could say, well, if it's a public project review, who does that? So you look at where the Rs are, staff reviews it, and you guys review that. And so it's just kind of a straightforward, simpler way to do it. The subdivision code, land development code, has the same structure. But the Board of Zoning Appeals is not involved in any of this, so they have been taken out. So it's just staff, you guys, and county council. In terms of the procedures that we have changed, for the zoning code, we've added administrative adjustments. And that is really a limited, up to, I think, 10% change, basically an administrative variance for, it's supposed to make up for mismeasurements and slight differences between, you know, what the plan was and the way it actually got built on the lot. You know, so it could apply to things like setbacks, heights, and it should save everybody time in asking for variances for those that somebody has erroneously done. Communication towers, permits, and small wireless. The federal government and FCC has really come into this space and come up with a number of regulations about timing and about the information that local governments can require for applicants. And so we have revised all of those procedures to try to comply with the federal government and also with the South Carolina regulations from the state about small wireless, which has to be deployed in the right of way under certain circumstances. We have added a very clear procedure for public project review. The South Carolina Planning Act provides a review and feedback to determine consistency with the comp plan for public projects, which would include things like streets, public buildings, public facilities. And basically, it's one of your roles as the planning commission to review those, determine if they're consistent with the comp plan and with the future land use map. And so we've kind of clarified that to streamline, both streamline the process and clarify it. Special district rezonings, we've revamped that a lot to try to resolve it and simplify it. I understand from staff that you guys have had a lot of issues with, you know, kind of this multiple-step, you know, special district rezoning and the subdivision and how do these things all fit together? So, you know, we've really tried to come up with special districts that can be tailored and then also come up with a procedure so that staff can interact with the applicant, develop a plan for the site that's actually gonna, that's actually gonna work, and that then they can present it to the public in a meaningful way. Zoning code interpretations. This is a new procedure that allows the zoning administrator to interpret basically what terms that might be ambiguous in the zoning code mean. And we try to not include ambiguous terms, but, you know, sometimes people just see things differently or, you know, want to interpret in a way that maybe you didn't intend at the beginning. And that will also be a part of the land development code. The other clarifications for the land development code are civil construction plans, which are currently called, it's like development, construction plans, I think?
Subdivision construction.
Yeah, subdivision construction plans, that's right. And preliminary plaits. This is the, probably the biggest change is preliminary plaits. Currently, you all review preliminary plaits. And the proposal is to streamline the application process by having staff review the preliminary plaits. One of the goals with the land development code is that basically everything is a metric and that it can be applied without as much negotiation and uncertainty. So there's much more certainty on the part of the developer, but also on the part of the county, so you know what type of product and what sort of density and site orientations you're getting. So, and that's probably gonna be a subject for good conversation. I'll talk about it on the next slide, too. Private road acceptance. Obviously, the, if a developer constructs the road, the roads have to be built at county standards, and so we've just clarified what that procedure for road acceptance is. It's not like the developers can just build the roads and say, here you go, county theirs. It has to be that official acceptance procedure. Waivers is something that we've added. It's really just a variance for, or, I'm sorry, for subdivision and land development. So to clarify, certainly it doesn't sound like variances maybe all go with the BZA. We're gonna call them waivers, and you guys would be real waivers, which are basically just variances. And land development code interpretations, like we talked about. And we also have worked through the traffic impact analysis, so that we've combined the current process, the traffic impact analysis manual that staff has been using, with the current ordinance, so that that should work pretty well. We'll talk about that in detail. All right, so currently, also what we're proposing based on all the feedback that we got, obviously, a traffic impact analysis is really important, especially with larger developments. And so we've tried to focus it on the types of developments and the types of changes in use that are going to be the most burdensome on public infrastructure roads. So basically, you're only going to have to do traffic impact analysis for preliminary plat reviews, construction plans, special district rezonings, and special exception uses. And basically, we've added in, either to clarify or maybe it's slightly new, I think there were some uses that would require a traffic impact analysis that maybe didn't require a traffic impact analysis if it looked like there was basically minimal impact or no impact. So there are three tiers, tier zero, tier one, and tier two. As you can see, those tiers are defined by the average daily trips, daily peak trips, or number of lots. And so the level of detail that you'll have to have in your traffic impact analysis is well-tailored to, we hope, the impact. So in terms of the planning commission's role, the current things that you guys hear are rezonings, text amendments, preliminary plaits, private road acceptance, street names, and subdivision code variances. Under the new system, you're going to do rezonings, including special district rezonings, and those have been aligned a little bit more. Also, public project review, text amendments, appeal of administrative decisions, street names, and land development code waivers. And so really, the revisions here are, you know, mainly to go from preliminary plat review, where, you know, you hear a lot of details and might get into the weeds. But under this new procedure, you would really only hear those types of projects if it's on an appeal of an administrative decision. So if staff makes a decision on the development, if the developer is dissatisfied with it or if a different interested party, a neighboring landowner or somebody else appeals it, then you would hear it more as an appellate body. And the other procedures that you guys have, many of those are required by the South Carolina Planning Act, including reading street names. So we have tried to simplify the rules of measurement. Currently, the rules of measurement are generally off in the different parts of the code about the thing you're measuring, so we've put all the rules of measurement in one part. And each different thing that you're measuring, whatever the metric is, whether it's density or whether it's, you know, linear, has a, generally, if it's complicated, there's a drawn, obviously with sites and, let's say, it's the width of the lot, for example. Measuring the width of a lot sounds simple until you start to think about, what is the width of a lot on a cul-de-sac, maybe, where it's shaped much more like a piece of pie than like a rectangle? And so we have kind of clear diagrams of something like on the right, which would maybe be more of a cul-de-sac. And it clarifies where and how you measure everything that has to be measured. For the definitions, we have really tried to consolidate them, simplify. We've added a definition for all of the uses in the use table, so that there will not be any dispute about what people can actually do with their property. And also, some of the definitions in the current code have what I would call maybe substantive regulations. So I think we have the example here of home occupations, you know, some of the actual standards for home occupation were in the definition. And so all of the things that were standards are now under the, under the use regulations and basically the definition is just, it's much more like a dictionary. That's our goal. We've also added a list of acronyms, you know, planners love acronyms, and so that will help you decode and help mainly the public decode any acronyms that are present in the zoning code and the LDC. Also, we have tried to streamline and consolidate the application submittal requirements. So obviously, most of the procedures have some kind of application and procedure that has to be followed. So we've made the change and are recommending the change to maintain all of the submittals and checklists outside the code. Currently, some of the procedures have an actual list of things that you have to submit with your application package, which is great until the name of the thing changes. You know, maybe the engineering society has now come up with a new standard, and so the old standard that they had no longer applies, but it's still in your code. So this gives the staff the flexibility to maintain a checklist, but also it will be something that the public will have available to them, so it'll be transparent and certain, but it will also be flexible, and that's really the goal, with bringing it out, bringing any checklists out of the code. And then it also, we've also included special submittal requirements for some particular types of uses, like some uses with access and routing plans, communication towers and small wireless facilities all have kind of technical and different standards for the types of things that you would want to see. And then for other situations that are different, it also authorizes, staff, you guys, the Board of Zoning Appeals and county council to require and request technical studies of particular things. So if there's something that you really don't, you didn't foresee, obviously, the regulation can't identify, you know, every problem that might be present on any particular site. So, you know, maybe you're much more concerned about an environmental impact report or a threatened and endangered species survey on some site where you have had somebody discover some endangered species. Maybe with a project near a neighborhood, maybe you're more worried about a noise study. So it gives you some flexibility to require these additional technical studies, but not require them all the time. So that is as much as I'm gonna agree with procedures, but I'll be happy to talk about any questions that you guys have with Kelly, though, too.
Can you describe what the public project review is? Like what's under that umbrella?
Yes. You have a.
I do have a.
Okay.
So this is straight out of the Planning Act. So essentially, what we've done is carry forward the language that's in the Planning Act, because it's a little bit unclear. But so the statute specifically includes small utili, let's see. It expressly exempts certain public projects like water, wastewater, electricity, communications services. But the definition of public project is any, is any project by or for a public agency using real property as owner or tenant that falls within the jurisdiction of York County. So public agencies include agencies and departments of the state, county, agencies and county departments, and then municipalities and municipal departments. So the statute actually appears to apply to both public and privately-owned projects, but it's specifically public projects, but they, the statute says they can be privately-owned. But what we've proposed is to just limit it to projects that are publicly owned by a city, the county, or the state, and that's consistent with the approach used in some other communities. A lot of, a lot of folks don't implement this particular part of the Planning Act, but we think it's in the Planning Act, so we want to make sure that we cover it.
So does that include roadway?
Yes.
Roadways are not exempt, they are included. So HEDIS 5 would have to come through.
But I guess the one, the key component of the public project review is there's no approval authority.
Yeah.
The, you guys are just reviewing it for consistency with the compacted plan. And you make a finding, essentially, whether the proposed project is consistent or not. And if you find that it's not consistent, there's some extra hoops for the public agency to go through. They have to add, you know, put a notice in the newspaper or something, but it doesn't prevent them from moving forward with that particular project. So it's really more advisory in nature.
And so the goal is to coordinate all of the county's infrastructure development activities with the plan. So, you know, like if you're gonna build new roads, build new sewer, the development will follow that infrastructure. And if somebody wants to build sewer or roads where you would rather have there be farm fields, then that's something that you should be able to set. And so that's why we've included that there, that's why the Planning Act has that as a component of your review and authority.
So when you're proposing to take preliminary plat approval and move that strictly as a staff function, not a planning commission function, would that also then take vested right approval, all of that, and move it to staff as well?
No.
And then, I think on top of that, there's always been a discrepancy between the county and the state.
Right.
And could we use this time now here in Rico to match them up?
In terms of vested rights?
Isn't vested rights in 153?
Yeah, it is.
So this does not change the vested rights.
That's part of 153, but then there's also.
Correct.
There's a section there.
There's a very small section.
While we're talking.
There's a vested rights as well.
The whole, you know.
Right. But I mean, if we're, that isn't 153, but if you're taking preliminary plat and moving it, does that also move vested rights? And then in 150, it's 154.190, there's a section on vested rights, it's a very small section on vested rights in 154. We haven't gotten to that yet. I was just curious, since it's with preliminary plat being moved over, would that also move vested rights?
Well, vested rights applies to any approved plan of development, and the state has a very broad definition of what that means.
Right, but I know what vested rights are, I'm just asking if, since preliminary plat is being moved or being suggested to be moved to staff, would then vested rights also be moved to staff away from planning commission reviewing that?
Yeah, for the preliminary plaits, yeah. Whichever body would approve it, that's, at that point, when it gets approved, that's when the vested right is applied.
Right. But so when they come back, say, three years later?
For a renewal.
For a renewal, then that would not come before, right, or that would certainly stay with staff? Is that?
I don't believe that 155, or 154 addresses.
It's 154.
It does.
Sounds like great question.
It says 1, 189C talks about renewal, annual renewal.
What number was that?
151. It's the 154, section C, page 22.
154, 180, 189.
Nope, not C. It's 154-190.
Remembering. 189C.
Yep, 189. 154 dot 189. Page 21 and section G.
In G, okay. And then Kate, she's not here, but she had sent Diane some notes, and one of the things she wanted to add into that for vested rights would be requiring another TIA before extending vested rights.
So that's part of B? Under B, if there is a change of condition, basically, they have to, with the vested right application, they have to submit a statement that the methodology is still valid.
Right. We've just run into some issues where after six years, the traffic has been a complete change from when it was originally approved six, you know, five, six years ago. We've had multiple large apartment buildings.
Retail.
Retail go in right next to one particular development, borough, obviously. This looking at like 500 lots, which when it was approved six years ago, the traffic was not near the state where it is now. So that's why, I'm sure that's why she was asking about requiring a TIA after a certain point. She recommended after two years, but, yeah.
We did the traffic impact analysis procedure in land development code under scope of approval. So it's 154-218B. It does talk about the extension of the vested right preliminary plat. The applicant is required to submit a letter from its traffic engineer stating that the TIA is still valid.
That's what we want to change. We don't want them to say, we don't want their engineer to say, yeah, it's still a valid report, we want a new report.
Gotcha.
And so the, so it links up with section 154.218, which is under the traffic impact analysis part. And subsection C of that explains what is the criteria for whether it will be considered valid. So there's a 12-month time period. Then there are a number of different specific criteria that involve changes of condition, change in the roads, other road improvements that were seen. And so I think the goal was to link up the procedure of the traffic impact analysis procedure with the, with the review. But so, so look at C of 218 and see if that gets you.
Right, although it says, you know, development occurs within the study area that is significantly greater than the anticipated background growth from a rezoning, annexation, et cetera. So like in this particular case, there wasn't a rezoning there, but there was a very large apartment complex put in right next door, as well as more retail, as well as a YMCA. None of those required rezonings, but they all happened within that six-year period that created a huge impact on traffic in the area.
Yeah, I've spoke with the DOT about this, not in this specific case, but just in general, in that, you know, it really depends, part of it depends on where the development's occurring. If it's occurring on, you know, the western side of York County, they probably will, they would probably let something like this go because the traffic patterns wouldn't change that much. But they told me, like, as a specific example, like, if it was over an Indian land, the traffic study wouldn't be valid in 2022 if it was done today. So, I mean, you know, I don't like the fact that an engineer can write a letter saying, well, you know, the thing I did last year is okay this year, knowing the DOT is not gonna accept it.
The engineer they hired.
The engineer they hired.
Yeah.
So with, with subpart four, you know, I think that's what you mentioned, development occurs in significantly greater.
Yeah.
You know, we could put specific metrics in there, like with five. The way that four is worded, it gives you some flexibility on what significantly greater is. You know, zoning, rezonings, and annexations are not a limitation, it's just examples. So, you know.
Although whenever we try to argue things like that, our attorney, our county attorney says, no, you can't use that as an excuse.
Yeah, so, I mean.
So even if, people say, no, that's in there because that's all you can use, not giving us any flexibility.
Sure, I mean, if you want other examples or metrics or something, I mean, we can.
I mean, if staff, like if staff in the DOT came back and said, this report from three years ago is still okay, I mean, I think that's kind of a level of comfort that we would have. Okay, we may not like it, but at least we know it's been reviewed. But if I know, like, you know, DOT is not gonna accept the report in 24 months, you know, for something that's 24 months old.
And based on my quick reading of 154, 218B here for the scope of approvals for TIA's, and then also in chapter 153 on the vested development rights section, so the vested right would be established by whatever application we're talking about, by whatever the final approval. by whatever the final approval body is. And if it's staff for preliminary plat, that's when the vested right would be established. But the language still says that any vested rights renewal has to go to planning commission. That's consistent with what 218 says. And if you get to a renewal and there's, you know, sufficient concern on the part of the planning commission that maybe the traffic conditions have changed significantly in a particular area, maybe not in the western area, then there might not be a concern. But if there is a valid concern that, hey, I know we looked at an apartment or, you know, a distribution center across the street or down the block, then maybe that's an opportunity to ask for that technical study that's an expansion of what the planning commission can ask for. Like, hey, we would like to ask for a renewal of the TIA at this time because I think circumstances in the area have changed and maybe we need to have another...
I think that's... Our concern is that we keep being told we can't. And if it's limited in here, then, you know...
Well, the concern about that, though, is the timing of it. It's because you can't submit your application for vested rights to come to planning commission too far in advance.
Right.
But if they go too long, if they come to you and say, okay, and you say, "No, I'm sorry, but I want a TIA to be done," well, it expires the next day. So that's, we gotta figure out... If we're gonna go that route, we've gotta figure out our deadlines to make sure that we can achieve that.
Well, I think the initial submission of the request for the extension has to be done within the, what is it, 60 days of the expiration?
It can be not more than. After there was a time where it was coming in, like...
Oh, yeah, a year and a half, yeah.
It came in, we quit, like, you just got this done. So we added a "can't come in too soon" clause to it.
But I think if they come in within that window and we were to request something else, they're still in within that window. I don't think that... You know what I'm saying? Put it in there so that it's still...
I know what you mean, yeah, yeah.
So that they're not coming back to us after the date. No, they came to us before the date. We're requesting more information.
Right.
It's still valid until we get that TIA and put it in.
With the confirmation.
Even if it's two months after.
That works that way. We'll have to check that to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, I would... Yeah, I mean, that's not fair to say you have to get the TIA to us tomorrow. Yeah, obviously, that's...
Exactly, so I just have to figure out whether or not we can... How we do those timelines and everything to make it work.
Right, as long as the initial request comes in within that timeline, obviously, they have to have time to get whatever request, extra requested information.
So, from what you presented, the planning commission would not be reviewing preliminary plats?
That's correct.
Outside of it, you know, being valid under state law, what would be the reason for that or the benefit for that?
Well, largely preliminary plats are based on explicit quantitative standards. There's not a lot of room for discretion in the subdivision standards. And so that's mainly the reason.
And so when you have administrative procedures, anything that is, you know, closely resembling a rubber stamp, essentially, the best place to have that happen is staff so that things move as quickly as they can and there's really not much room for interpretation on things like metric qualified things anyway. So that keeps all projects moving as quickly as possible through all the processes.
Wouldn't that be a transparency issue from a public standpoint?
Well, I could see how you might think it would be that way, but preliminary plats aren't advertised to the public. So, because they are, at that point, they are submitting a preliminary plat, it's a vested right, so they didn't need to... Not a vested right, excuse me, a by right development. So they didn't need to submit a rezoning when they needed to change the zoning district of whatever their proposal is seeking to develop. So there is no mailer sent out. There's no public hearing. So there really isn't a community public input transparency issue for preliminary plat. They either meet the requirements of Chapter 154, or they don't. If they don't meet it, they don't get it through.
So basically, it would bypass the planning commission and go straight to council?
Council does not review preliminary plats.
Well, I mean, in some cases, we have situations where, you know, if a public hearing is required from county perspective, then wouldn't they just go straight to them and... I don't know.
So that wouldn't apply to preliminary plats today or as proposed in RECODE. There is no public hearing for preliminary plat. So I think if it does have a public hearing, and John had that chart that had the list of different application types, some of which required a public hearing and some did not.
It's just street name changes.
Yeah, so in 154, it's gonna be the waivers. So if someone is coming to the planning commission, I believe we had one of these a couple of months ago, related to townhome road connection. So that was a public hearing, but that doesn't go to county council. It only goes to the planning commission. So you can see how this grid outlines, you know, who makes a recommendation would be your R. Who makes the decision would be the D. And who is the appeal body if someone doesn't like how that decision turned out would be the A. So in the case of preliminary plats, even though administratively staff would be reviewing those under this proposal of RECODE, the planning commission would still be the appeal body. So if a neighbor didn't like how that decision turned out, they would still be able to appeal to the planning commission. And likewise, if a developer got a denial from staff because we feel like they didn't meet a standard, then they feel like, no, I think we did. They would have the opportunity to appeal to the planning commission to make that determination of whether they did.
Yeah, so you would still hear some preliminary plat cases, but it would be in a different procedural posture. And I think it depends on, I mean, I don't know. I hear lots of stories about planning commissions that last until midnight.
That's it?
If you guys are having that kind of problem, this can definitely help.
You probably...
Help resolve, you know, the... Just the volume. But if you're having problems with volume, then maybe this isn't what you thought it was.
We all know how much I love being told I have to vote yes because that's not a vote. I'm not voting if you tell me I have to vote yes. Yes, that still just really teases me off, no end.
I mean, that way it doesn't make sense. You have to...
It does, but then, I think back to a couple of years ago, when they were looking at a development out past Oak Ridge Middle School. And the one of the...
Real mill?
Early... Yep. And one of the early things in our packet was to extend the USB boundary. But then like three items later was the preliminary plat that if we didn't extend the USB boundary...
That was a rezoning.
Okay, that was a rezoning.
That was a rezoning and probably a comp plan amendment, maybe?
But it probably would have been with the plat, too. The plat wouldn't, had it been a plat, had it already been approved. Yeah, had it been zoned properly. If we had extended the USB, then that plat would have automatically been approved had it not been a rezoning. But because we saw that...
Did they submit a plat for that? It was like 200 and something like...
They did submit a plat with the rezoning.
They submitted a site plan for part of the rezoning, but they never submitted a plat for review. It never got rezoned.
But had it been rezoned and we hadn't seen... Had it not needed a rezoning, they had submitted a preliminary plat, but the USB would have needed to be extended.
But that wouldn't stop it. That wouldn't stop it. If the USB is doesn't... Is here, and they have a by right, you know, request over here, that wouldn't matter.
But if we had extended it to a... So it wouldn't have been by right at the time, but we would have never seen that. And that's my concern. We would have... So we would have said, "Sure, we can move the USB," not realizing that that would allow something like that to come in.
But the USB extension was part of the rezoning.
Right, no, I know.
So that's why you would see that. So the preliminary plat, I believe, wasn't an issue for that. I think we saw one as a site plant, what they were gonna do.
We didn't see the site plant.
Right, right, but it wasn't part of that.
Which is actually really nice, and I would have loved it somewhere else.
Are USB changes part of, like, we review? It's a comp plan amendment, so it's something we review in council?
Yes.
Yeah, see, I kind of see also where Antonio's coming from earlier because in the appeal plot for that preliminary plat where, you know, a neighbor might appeal, well, they're never notified of a preliminary plat. So the only really appeal would be in the rare case that staff denies the preliminary plat and then the applicant comes back and appeals it.
That is typically the...
So you wouldn't have... You wouldn't... I mean, neighbors wouldn't know about it till lanes being turned.
Right, and that's the way it functions today. Is that, you know, if the planning commission approves a preliminary plat or denies a preliminary plat, the public... It's not advertised to the public, so they wouldn't generally know about it anyway. And more often than not, an appeal would come from a developer that disagrees with how the planning commission voted, and that goes to court.
All right, so the next question is, right now, does... If a neighbor wanted to appeal a preliminary plat, is it the same process that we're talking?
Right now, under the current standards, they would have to appeal to court.
They'd have to appeal to court, okay.
Yeah.
Because it's a planning...
So if we did something where it was appealed to the planning commission, I guess...
Yeah, in order for it to get to court under the proposal, staff would have to make a decision. They would have to get appealed to the planning commission by either an interested party or the property owner developer. And if they didn't like whatever the appeal result was at the planning commission, then it would go to court.
I guess then... I guess this is coming down to a question like notification for homeowners. Is there a way? I guess is there some mechanism they could... You guys can put in the code for, as part of the administrative review, either, you know, they notify or have a community meeting or something? Or is it something, maybe you can just keep rolling down on the website? On the county's website?
Preliminary plats, I think, are put on the notify me's at this time.
Only because it's part of the...
Because it's part of the package.
But they wouldn't notify other than that.
Right.
So what... So we've set both the zoning and land development codes up so that they provide the absolute statutory requirement for notification. The planning department has additional notification protocols, and it's kind of like the submittal requirements. We basically wanted to put the requirement in the code, but it seems like notifications are happening differently and are changing at increasingly faster speeds. So, you know, maybe next week it's gonna be text message notifications instead of mailed notifications or email notifications. So Jonathan, do you want to explain kind of how you guys have that notification procedure and maintain it outside of the code? And how that might fit in with expanding notification to different areas? Different procedures, basically?
Yes. So, yeah, the state, what John's referring to is the State Planning Act has some very specific advertising requirements, which the county has to be. And then the department has requirements that we have internally that go above and beyond. So, do you want to summarize those, Bonnie? I think you deal with them most frequently.
Is this just for preliminary plats, though? Or is it just in general notifications?
For the rezoning notifications, that we do the postcards for rezonings?
Okay. For like the rezonings, I have to reach out. I think it's 500 feet within the... From the property. And I have to have, like, a minimum amount of contacts. And if I don't, I have to go out further. I mean, there's times I've gone out to 1,200 feet in order to get enough. And those rezonings... But that's once they go to county council because those rezonings will come to the planning commission first. And those notifications would be on, I guess, the notify me that is on the webpage. So that would be... If the public has signed up for those notify me's, then they would get that. And then it would go out to the county council where you would get the public hearing with the postcards going out, the amount of feet that I was talking about. And then there's an ad that's put in the paper and that L has to be done within so many weeks of the public hearing.
Right, and that's why the state statute has that nexus between a public hearing required for a certain type of application and the public notice that comes along with that. Because if you've got by right development, you don't want to, you know, reach out to the public at large and say, "There's this development coming in. By the way, we don't want to take any of your comments." That's kind of a tough sell for the public. So you don't want to have them show up to a meeting when they have no opportunity to speak and to voice any opposition because it is a by right development. At that point, it either meets the rules or it doesn't. So you would want to have all the public input on the front end for a rezoning application. So that's what the county process is today. Some jurisdictions do the public hearing at planning commission or at county council. Some do both. I've been at a jurisdiction that does both. Adds much more time to the process for proposals. So our window of approval, not my disagreement, but it's very short compared to a lot of other jurisdictions because of the process in place that the county has compared to the public hearing being exclusively at county council.
And I will say, a lot... There are quite a few communities in South Perliner who are moving in this direction, have preliminary plats approved at staff level. And kind of the biggest concern that I've heard is that the public, like Jonathan was saying, it's kind of a rubber stamp. And the public and even the planning commission doesn't really have the ability to say no to it. It's a by right development, and they either meet the requirements or they don't. And it's... It seems to be frustrating for the public, you know, because if they see something on an agenda and you think that you can go in and affect the decision on it, but you get there and you realize you really can't. It's just... It's discouraging and it's confusing. So like I said, a lot of communities aren't moving in that direction.
And then I had another question on the preliminary plats. 154.187 regarding the willingness and capability letters from service providers. This is something that's come up in our area quite a bit. We have a particular water company who is not capable.
It's being nothing nice.
It is being very nice. We've had absolutely no water for days on end. We have a lot of water shortages. We have serious issues. And they just keep handing out those willingness and capability letters when clearly they are not capable. Is there a trigger we can put in that says if you've had water shortages or now they have been forced to put in an emergency feed from Charlotte, which was supposed to just be an emergency feed, but they're pumping every day, hundreds of gallons of water every day from Charlotte? So is there a trigger we can say, you know, there's been water shortages in the last six months or rationing, or you're pumping X number of gallons of water through the emergency feed? You know?
Kind of like a level... Kind of like a level of service requirement.
Right, basically, yeah, exactly. And I don't know exactly what those triggers would be, but is there something we can put in there that we could then say, "Your willingness and capability letter is not valid because you are not capable?" I don't know if that's legally something we can even do, but if it is, I'd like it to be.
We'd have to look into it. I'm not sure the answer to that question, but we can certainly take a look.
Okay. And then if that's something we can put in there, again, I mean, I would kind of like to see that come before planning commission so we can look at it and say, you know, "We don't accept your willingness and capability letter," or have reasons to possibly look at that and say, "Yeah, no."
I think you should be sure, too, that it applies to all providers, utility.
Oh, exactly.
Across the board.
Across the board, not just blue granite, which is a truly horrible one, but there are others.
We don't believe you.
Not that we're calling out any names. But I mean, I work in the utility industry, and we've got the issue of intermittency of supply that's been moved to greener sources.
Right.
And I'd like to see that same rule applied, you know? If utility is not able to supply enough energy, that becomes also an issue. Hey, this... You're adding 500 more homes in this area, and you've had issue providing a liable service.
Right.
We need to be able to have a level we can flip that applies pressure to improve the level of service.
Right.
Because you end up with safety issues. That's a health... Actually, a health issue with water and sewer, so...
But there are some triggers we could put in there.
Okay. We'll take a look.
Yeah, that's really interesting. I'd see where you're coming from.
I'll have a contractor buy a little bit of lump of money that'll be used later on.
to upgrade the system, meantime, to go get the deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't mean to get, get you off on 154, but you were talking about preliminary plats, and that's all of preliminary plats.
This is great, I mean, I kind of thought you guys wouldn't want to talk about procedures.
Now we're just deep diving.
We're loving it, yeah.
We're not done.
He gets more active to midnight, so.
TIA's, I, I know we've talked about the checkpoints and when it comes up, and, but we've also had discussions about when there is funding for shared projects or contributing for mitigation. Can we get the language we've been talking about added in to the code, or, you know, when, when there's a mitigation project and they're, and they're contributing their fair share, you know, we know it goes toward, we, we know it's going toward that, but then we, our, our dilemma here has been, we don't know when any of that's going to happen, and then, you know, I think it was 80%, if they, if the person hits 80%, whoever, whoever comes along and crosses that 80% threshold has to fund the rest of it, and we talked about lowering that number down to 50?
This was, you know, like last month, or the month before?
It was the month before.
I guess with turn, with, with turn lanes, and they didn't have enough funding yet for that turn lane.
Does that have to do with how long the county's holding the money before the?
Well, so, so.
When the fund balance gets big enough to be able to complete the project. And so when some guy comes in here and they're going to be the next person in, they, and we haven't quite got to the, to fully fund the project, and it's at some point, they've got to go ahead and complete it. And so right now, it's at 80%. And so the question is to have it, you know, sooner than that, so you know.
So what we, what we do know is that, so if money comes in and they can do the design, they'll do the design. If the, money comes in, they can buy the right of way, then they'll buy the right of way. And so what we, you know, what we've been trying to understand is, okay, that's great, they're doing the design, they're doing, getting all that stuff done upfront, the turn lane's still not in, what, you know, at what point does it go in? You know, we, do we have to wait for the eighth project to come along and fund it? You know, and that could be four or five years down the road, which significantly changes, you know, the, the problem at, at first, so.
That's definitely one we'd have to talk to staff about and understand the, the current procedures.
Is that part of your advocate of public facilities?
There is, no. That's a, that's a great term to talk about for another meeting.
Yeah, I think what Matt's referring to is largely in the TIA guidelines.
Yeah, okay.
Built for years as well, yeah. They actually go through, they're doing, they're doing this, yeah.
Which his name is changing, the board serves the deals.
BZA instead of EBA?
Just, just to throw you off.
We'll, we'll take a look and see, and see what we can do there.
And then, just this little, I love the fact that we can get the interpretations. Can we just put them on the website so that everybody can just see them really easy, so later on, when people are going through, just they can pull up all of them?
They'll be all new.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I think that's even a requirement, you know.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry.
We make it publicly available, and that, and they got.
I know they're publicly available, but just like, you know, put them on the website's way easier than me calling you and.
And I think in most instances, you know, if it's a matter of, well, there's some, maybe some ambiguity there, we would go ahead and probably once a year amend the code to fix all those, you know, ambiguities and have all of those interpretations codified. But otherwise, it might be a term that's interpreted, and that can always be publicly available, easily accessible home laws.
Any other procedural questions, guys?
I have, I'm sorry, another vested right. I know, I'm down, I'm down, I'm out of place, but since we're kind of in that, the county statute, and this is probably a moral question for you, has it been changed because the sentence, "The Planning Commission may extend the time for vested site-specific development plan to a total of five years upon the determination that there is just cause for the extension and that the public interest is not adversely affected?" Because we tried arguing that before, and the county attorney said that was in the state statute, but it was not in the county statute, but I have the county statute, and it is in the county statute. So is that something?
That is in 153.
Right, that's 150, yes, 153.
15.912.
Right. 92, section C. But it still kind of deals with the same.
Right.
It's weird that some of the vested rights stuff is in 154 and some of it's in 153.
Yeah, the majority of it's actually here, this is actually established in like 153, before kind of how you see what the right, place that is. I think it fairly aligns with the state statute, but I have to go back and compare the two to see where they, how they look at it.
So if we can argue that it does adversely affect the public good, is that then grounds to deny a vested right? Or we just have to talk to the county attorney?
But the question is, does vested, does vested rights come to us again, or is it going to, it will, so.
Yeah, they said that would come back.
Okay, so you got, so theoretically, you guys would approve a preliminary plat, and then later on, a vested right would come to us.
Wow. Without us having seen the plat and gone over the plat, which makes it kind of hard to then.
What a tangled web we weave.
And Debbie, did you have a question to go back to?
Yes, yes, okay. Back to my RD1, changing to RMX-20, allowing townhomes. Could we add a special exception for that, since that is something that, you know, could or could not adversely affect an area, and that, that would go back to the zoning board of appeals?
Allowing townhouses is a special exception? Sure.
In, in the RMX-20.
Since it wasn't originally.
It was not originally in there.
So it'd still be available.
It's going to require a public hearing.
Yeah, it's still going to be available, but.
So it gives the public a chance.
Just to doctorize and cross your teeth.
Sure, yeah, I mean, if that, if that's the, that's a recommendation from the commission, that's certainly something to, it's easily done, I mean, it's just, yeah.
Literally, we just change a letter on it.
Right.
And a table.
Instead of P, it's now C?
SE.
No, SE.
Yep.
Yeah. Any further throwback questions?
I've got a weird one.
Oh, you have a weird one?
Okay, so, aren't you glad you guys showed up tonight? And you have a new person on that really doesn't know. Okay, how does the recode make a difference to expiring golf courses?
Okay, what do you mean by expiring golf courses? Like golf courses that are going out of business?
Yes, yeah, we just had this in Fort Mill, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a golf course, and they closed it down and.
Built on.
Built of, yeah.
Okay, so.
Killed all those beautiful golf course, view homes.
Yep.
What is proposed in the use table is that golf courses, now, now we're not talking about neighborhood amenity golf courses, just a standalone golf course, is a permitted use only in the new Parks and Recreation District. So what does that mean for, I guess it would depend on what the underlying zoning is for the golf course currently, if it were.
As I understand it, there are different areas, some differently.
Right.
This golf course spanned in two states, two counties.
Yeah, that's right.
Or maybe even more counties than two.
There's one more part in Mecklenburg County.
Yeah, there's one more little part in Mecklenburg, yeah.
For Sundays, you get drinks.
Is that the only place the carts circulate?
And.
I only play tools.
So, so here again, like I say, it's different areas were zoned differently. So I just, but there are still some undeveloped areas that.
Sure. This is another issue that a number of communities in South Carolina have struggled with. They've had golf courses go defunct, and the underlying zoning is often residential, which means they could potentially be subdivided into residential communities, so.
Oh, oh, and to add to there, there's a cemetery in the area also.
Well, the cemetery might make some difference.
So it's a.
It's a separate parcel.
It's a whole conglomeration.
So with the Parks and Rec, current golf courses, will they automatically be rezoned to that Parks and Rec?
That's what I was going to ask.
Or would they have to request that rezoning?
I could take that one. So, so as part of this project, there's really only one type of rezoning that's proposed with the RECODE project, to keep it as straightforward and as simple as possible, so we don't start overly complicating things by changing a lot of districts and having a council-initiated rezoning in the midst of the whole RECODE project. So that would be the AGC1 and AGC consolidation into a single AGC, and also similarly, the RED1 and RED into a single RED. So the other new zoning districts, there aren't going to be any of that available, right, obligation, and that includes the new Parks and Rec District. So on the staff side, we've got a list of properties that, once the commute code passes, that we would bring forward to county council to consider initiating county-initiated rezonings for certain properties to go into some of the new districts, and that includes Parks and Recreation, so.
Would owners have to agree?
No, so the way that the, the county initiate, and that's one of the reasons that we don't want it to be part of the RECODE project, because then we get into, you know, a lot of property rights battles and things like that, and we don't want to have that for the RECODE process. So in, in Parks and Recreation, part of that would be county parks, and that's initially one, the county would like to have its own lands protected and put into the PR district. We would also recommend any existing in-use golf courses be placed into PR as well, and that would be by motion of county council, so you don't need the county, the property owner's permission to initiate that. They certainly have input in the public hearing and all of that. There are very few functioning golf courses in the county today, I think, might be one.
I know of one.
In the county?
That will not be in the county.
Pintec.
Yeah.
That's the only one that's still available right now.
Yeah. But there are other ones that may have gone out of business and are otherwise unimproved, so that it's been improved as a golf course, and there's nothing else on it, there's no other structures. So that might be appropriate to add to the list of properties that we would recommend council consider for rezoning to PR. So there might be some of those Fort Mill properties that no longer have active golf course on them, but are sort of just sitting there ripe for redevelopment, maybe it's appropriate for council to rezone those to PR as well.
Carolina Orchards loves that area to walk on, so you, you guys, the county could have a lovely walking area for Carolina Orchards, so, just throwing that out there. Any further, office, or other topics?
Yes, just one last question for Jonathan. You had said that you didn't want to have rezonings as part of the RECODE for property rights issues, but the AGC and AGC1, that really does impose an issue, right?
Yeah, there's, they're essentially, they're more or less the same exact districts, which is part of the reason why, you know, the proposal is to consolidate them. Really, the only difference substantively is that you can have a mobile home on your AGC or RED lot, and you cannot have a mobile home on your AGC1 or RED1 lot. And that poses, you know, some equity issues where you've got these agrarian zoning districts, and you're allowing mobile homes one and not on the other, and that's really the only difference, so perhaps the county's being a little exclusionary with that practice and separation right now.
Okay. And the new code has the condition anyway?
And that's all being carried.
Okay, I think that wraps up. No further questions?
All right.
All right, well, we're getting close. We're down to the land development code, module four. And Sean covered a lot of the procedures and administrative sections, so we obviously aren't going to talk about those again. Jonathan mentioned at the beginning, you all have a copy of the draft land development, land development manual, which is just a technical design document that staff has created that's going to help applicants. So we won't, we won't talk about that in any detail either, but we will talk about subdivision site design, infrastructure, and then guarantee acceptance of improvements briefly. Okay, so some of the major changes, there are new development standards, context-sensitive design and infrastructure standards. We've also consolidated the infrastructure guarantee and accepted standards, so there's someone in developers building roads, how they guarantee that the roads meet the standards and are going to stand up. There's new standards for trails. We're going to talk a little bit about entrance stacking and vehicle queuing requirements, and then close it out with some incentives for low-impact development, and then we'll talk through some of the purpose changes to the tree ordinance. So new development standards are specific regulate, or regulations for specific types of development to facilitate high-quality development, townhouse subdivisions being one of those. We mentioned earlier that a lot of the standards that currently apply in the Lake Wiley overlay for townhouses are being carried forward so that they'll apply county-wide. There are also some proposed standards for cottage courts, which is a new type of, a new housing type that we're starting to see more and more community interest in and public support for those types of small developments. And then, of course, we're carrying forward the cluster subdivision regulations as well. We've also codified the centralized mail delivery standards. This is something that the postal service requires in a lot of new developments, where rather than every house having a mailbox at the end of the driveway, there's a centralized location, helps with, you know, speed and efficiency in terms of delivering the mail. So we have some new development standards for that, and they are based on best practices and standards from the local postal service, or, I'm not sure what they call it, but the, the local post offices, basically, they have their own sort of standards in terms of development and design and that sort of thing, so we've incorporated those. This is also something that, this is an excerpt from the land development manual, so you can see how the land development manual is very technical in nature and focuses on a lot of engineering sort of standards. So we propose some context-sensitive design and infrastructure standards, and we base that context on the, on zoning district, because there are different characters, really, and, and purposes associated with each of the districts. So here, we've proposed a tiered maximum block length for single-family residential development, so longer blocks in the more rural areas where you don't expect to see people walking, to get some, you know, you see people walking for exercise and walking the dogs and stuff, but walking for transportation, you really see that more in some of the higher-density districts, and so that's why there's. And so, that's why there's smaller maximum blocks, block lengths in some of the higher-density residential districts. The maximum block length decreases the higher the density goes. Same thing for sidewalks. They are required for new streets in the suburban and kind of moderate and higher-density residential districts, but not required in some of the more rural areas because often there's nothing to connect to in those areas. And then, we've consolidated the infrastructure guarantee and acceptance standards just to improve consistency between the processes. This is improvement guarantees, you know, developer warranting streets, for example, in sidewalks for a specific period of time before the county takes them over. So, we've clarified what that process is essentially for the developer to build and turn over public improvements to the county. We've also proposed some new standards for the construction and dedication of off-street pedestrian trails and multi-use paths. They are required to be constructed by the developer in accordance with any adopted plans, like the Carolina Throw Trail Plan or the Conventive Plan. There's also easements that are required in order to guarantee public access. There's long-term maintenance requirements as well. It can be owned by a neighborhood association or another entity, but they are required to maintain it to certain standards over time. So, we've also proposed some new requirements for entrance stacking and this is intended to accommodate waiting vehicles at the entrance to a parking lot or development. You can see in that top photograph how close that first parking space is to the driveway. And so, you can imagine, well, one, the parking space probably doesn't get used a whole lot, but you can imagine the potential for conflict if there is a car parked there trying to back out of the space at the same time somebody's trying to turn in. So, these stacking requirements really just increase the distance between the entrance to a parking lot and either the first drive aisle or the first parking space, just to reduce those conflicts and also reduce the potential for vehicle backups on the adjacent road. You know, if you're trying to turn right in here while somebody's backing out of the parking spot and then you're backing up people on this road here. So, it's just, again, intended to reduce conflicts between vehicles, both inside and outside the parking area. We've also added some standards for vehicle queuing, which applies to any use with a drive-through service. So, we're talking banks with teller windows or ATMs, car washes, pharmacies, drive-through restaurants, that sort of thing. So, there's a minimum length for each drive-through lane based on the type of use. There's also some design standards, requires well-marked pedestrian crossings and it also requires, I call them an escape lane, so that you don't, so that you don't get stuck in a vehicle queuing lane. Because I've definitely been in some communities where, once you get in the drive-through lane, you can't get out. So, there are provisions for that bypass lanes going around spaces. All right, turn it over to Sean.
All right, so now we're going to talk about green infrastructure. And we've, we've put a couple of different things together, some of which you work on a good bit, like open space. So, there is a subchapter, Subchapter B in Chapter 154 called "Green Infrastructure." And one of the serious components of it is the low-impact development incentives. So, for those of y'all who don't know what a low-impact development is, it's not just a development that hasn't had a bunch of impact on land, which is what it sounds like. It's a way of treating stormwater. And generally, what it means is that you use some kind of design element to mimic the natural process of water infiltration. So, you would have like swales and rain gardens, you could have systems where you collect water and reuse it in your landscaping, whatever. And so, really, the concept here is that we're providing incentives for developers. It's not mandatory incentive-based structure for them. If they use low-impact development techniques that are defined in the code and also are always changing, I think, and vary quite a bit on, depending on the site, permeability of the soil on the site, lots of other technical engineering factors. And so, if the site uses two or more low-impact development features that handle forty percent of the water volume, then they will qualify for incentives. And one of those techniques that they can use is increasing the riparian buffer by fifteen percent voluntarily. So, it lists the benefits, I guess, that you would receive for the incentive, including increasing building heights for non-residential, parking modifications for non-residential, and lot size reduction for major subdivisions. Another part of the green infrastructure is going to be open space, which you guys probably know more about than maybe you want to because you dealt with it a lot earlier this year, so we won't labor that. But, so trees is also part of the LDC now. We moved it from zoning, this wasn't zoning. So, we've made a couple of tweaks to the, to the tree ordinance. The first is for tree save areas, as you guys know, there was a fifteen percent, I'm sorry, a twenty percent residential tree save requirement. And we've added a commercial tree save requirement for commercial lots. And also, we've taken a good bit of feedback, especially from staff, to simplify the procedures for tree surveys and tree counts. So, basically, under this new, the new ordinance, a developer could use an aerial photograph to calculate tree save areas, just in terms of the rough percentages. And then, also, if there are tree save areas that are greater than three acres in unit size, then you can use a sample survey instead of having to do a full survey of literally all every tree. And also, the tree save areas have been coordinated with other open space preservation-type requirements, like buffer yards, the open space requirement, floodplain and wetlands, and the low-impact development areas. So, there is quite a bit of overlap because, as you realize, if you have, you know, five percent here and ten percent here and twenty percent here, suddenly you require the person to preserve thirty-five percent of their lot. But, there can be some overlap between these different topics. All right, and so, in terms of tree planning requirements on, especially on residential lots in major subdivisions, there was a sort of a complicated formula based on whether it was forested land or cleared land or partially cleared land. And now, there's just one standard under this proposed provision that hopefully will simplify the requirements for residential lots. And also, it allows street trees on the lot to qualify as part of that planning requirement. And it will also work well, I hope, with the, with the development manual, which includes a new tree preferred species list. So, also, based on a lot of feedback that we've gotten, that you guys may have gotten too, grand trees have been redefined. So, this has taken the framework that a lot of communities are adopting now. You know, really, twenty, any kind of set limit doesn't necessarily capture the nature of what makes a tree unique based on its age or size. The best example would be something like a dogwood. You know, there may not be a twenty-four-inch dogwood on the planet, but you can get a, you know, a ten-inch dogwood that's a hundred and something years old. And so, really, it combines a bunch of different concepts in the definition, but it simplifies it with a table. So, there is a table of different species and criteria provisions, so it's very clear and objective. It has a catch-all of all other species at twenty-four inches, which is the current standard that you guys have for everything. It has higher standards and lower standards for others. And it also includes champion trees as a concept, which is a list maintained by Clemson. And that is basically the largest specimen of each species in the state that's been documented. So, those are also protected. And then, also, a tree regardless of its size cannot be a grand tree if it's an invasive species, also on a Clemson-maintained blacklist. So, this applies to all uses and provides for removal or in only special cases where the tree has some kind of problems with its health or its structure. Or also, I think there's an exception for when it creates significant difficulties with the site layout. And in cases that grand trees have to be removed, there's a mitigation and fee-in lieu requirement. And so, one of the big changes in the code is fee-in lieu of tree preservation or mitigation. So, it establishes the York County Tree Fund. And in staff's discretion, and so the developers won't be able to decide that they don't want to comply, they'd just rather pay a fee, there is basically a per-tree fee-in lieu of compliance. So, for both tree save areas and grand trees, either there is a tree planning requirement or there is a fee-in lieu where they pay a set amount, depending on the type of tree, into the tree fund. And the fund's uses are limited only to tree planning, maintenance, and program administration, so it doesn't go into the county's general fund. It goes into this literally special tree fund. And so, that concludes all of the LDC presentation and begins the round of questioning related to the LDC. So, you all hit us with anything you got.
Start backwards, the red trees redefined. I just, I just want to understand, so just explain to me the state champion tree again.
Right.
Like, give me an example of what one is.
Yes, so that is a very good question. It's funny, when we were doing this, Jonathan, do you have any of the actual metrics? Jonathan suggested this list and it was down when we were putting it in.
You don't have to give me like the exact, just like what would be...
What qualifies as a state champion tree?
Yes, it's basically, and I forget which group maintains the list, but it's the largest tree of any species in the state. So, it's not just, oh, we're gonna, it's only other one each.
So, it's like the, is it the angel oak?
The angel oak.
Yeah, so like an angel oak. If it's, yeah, if for some reason somebody finds one outside Clover, you know, angel oak too, call it. Then it becomes...
It would have to be the largest one of its kind in the state.
Yeah.
So, you probably have to contact Clemson, have them come out, do the study.
And so, most of the...
Select the largest you can cut.
This would probably be defined as grand trees anyway, under the catch-all of all other species. It would, it would really only apply in a situation where there is a smaller species of tree that is of unusual size for its species.
And just, I've had a couple of people ask me, just so we can, Bradford pears are considered invasive now?
Yeah, so they were added to the list and they will be officially, I think, prohibited for commercial sale in...
Twenty twenty-four?
Twenty-three or twenty-four?
Twenty-four. South Carolina's the second state, Ohio was the first. And actually, South Carolina is doing, in Columbia, they're doing tree exchange. As long as you present either photo evidence or physical evidence of Bradford being removed, they'll give you native trees to replace them with.
That's a good, that's a great use for the tree fund.
Why would a tree make it to the invasive list?
So, usually, trees make the invasive list if they are non-native and also aggressive. There are a lot of trees mainly from Asia that basically, so we have a lot of deciduous trees and deciduous shrubs. And so, a lot of, for some reason, the, a lot of the, you know, basically like the types of things that you would put in your garden, you want to have leaves all year long. And those kind of outcompete our native species. And so, examples are like Chinese privet, Japanese privet, you know, basically like things that keep their leaves all year long really like living in our moist, humid environment. And so, they spread like wildfire, they get out in the loose, you know, I mean, and it's not just trees. I mean, it's things like, you know, you see ivy growing around. And I think privets are probably, you know, a really good example. Formosa, mimosa trees. You know, and so, basically, it's something that just really likes living here and there's nothing here that eats it, or usually the criteria that makes something invasive.
And that's why the Bradford pear was actually, we put on that state list, but banned for commercial use. Can't be sold to homeowners, can't be used in buildings.
Who determines the, the cost of the...
We estimated the fee based on the, based on the cost of plant.
Not the size of tree that's being removed?
Oh, you're saying that, you're saying that fee...
Yeah, the fee-in lieu, so somebody's removing, you know...
Is there a table or how is that determined?
There is just a, there's just a standard for, I think it's my foot, I think it's actually by trees. I almost like pulled up.
I think it's inches versus inches.
I'm just like a nine-inch sour wood, you know, versus a thirty-six-inch oak.
Grand tree is forty-five dollars per caliber inch.
Okay, so that's, so that's a good metric. Well, no, well, it does for, depending on, you know, those, so...
And I think of chief interest to the planting commission is because the tree ordinance is being relocated from the zoning code to the land development code, if a developer wanted to remove a grand tree and they could not meet any of the criteria for an administrative approval for removal, they would have to pursue a waiver with the planting commission to have a grand tree removed and no longer be a resident.
Rare and endangered species, is there, are those prohibited in any case? Or can they do a waiver? So, I don't know, I mean, my question, do you get into core, you know, you know, other federal permitting? If it's rare and...
Yeah, so this, any of the county's regulations doesn't serve to supersede any federal regulation about preserving an endangered species. So, to the effect that they're protected either statewide or nationwide, that would control. But, if you had an endangered species on the list and for some reason it wasn't protected beyond what the county offers, they could apply for a waiver for the planting commission to have it removed. It would just, because it's rare or endangered, it would automatically...
As I'm saying, it's, you know, it's like, my, my point is like, the county's not going to come up with the list. You're going to reference some other things, so... Yeah, so you're going to reference the federal list and then that would kind of supersede everything. So, if they get that approval, then they could remove it and then it would fall back under fee-in lieu.
Regarding the surveys, the aerial survey, is there a requirement that that imagery be within a certain amount of time? I don't want to go back and get an orthophotography from years ago that meets their needs and say, well, we did the survey based on this image.
But, Carrie, don't you guys do an...
Well, it doesn't say in here specifically what that imagery has to be or how recent it has to be.
Yeah, that's what's going to be my question. Do you use Google Earth?
Well, I mean, even if, even if...
That's only updated every two years.
Yeah, but I'm saying to go back.
That's the best, actually.
I don't know if Jonathan and Diane, because, do you guys, I mean, you guys do an aerial every year?
Not every year, but...
Well, almost, but the last three years you've done it.
With how the city does it and when the county does it.
Yeah, right, so you, so like the last county aerial that was done was twenty nineteen, but Rock Hill has twenty twenty.
Right. I just want to be sure we specify that because they, because if you say aerial, they could go by the letter of the law and pick it.
Well, they can't really use nineteen seventy. They're not going to, because we have more recent...
You do, but you don't specify that.
It's never been an issue. We can pull up the latest one and say...
Yeah, I know, but...
Yeah, but we can add a date.
And then, if you do a sample method, because obviously, tree-covered areas that are density, what's the methodology behind that sample method? Because, I mean, you have different densities in a tree save area. I mean, you've got one that's a sparsely deciduous area, you get into another that's a very dense, you know, pine growth. How, I mean, how, what's the methodology behind doing a sample? Because they, you know, again, they're...
Right, you can prove anything with statistics if you pick your right sample.
Right, and so, the point of surveying trees in a tree save area is to really establish what's there. So, in the event that some improved improvement that wasn't permitted, some HO... some HOA decided to put in a playground, and they cut down a whole bunch of trees in the tree-save area, not realizing that they were supposed to be protected forever. Maybe they didn't meet their documentation. So that establishes where those trees are generally. But when you have really expansive tree-save areas, you're going to have, you know, several acres at once, and you're really not going to have improvement that gets into that area. They might nibble at the edges. So that's the methodology behind providing just a sample. So we have a general understanding of what the trees look like in that tree-save area. And it also provides an incentive for developers to offer more total tree-save because you don't have to spend the money to survey every single tree in your tree-save area if you're preserving more trees total.
And also, it's not, it's not based on the count. It's much more concerned with the area for the tree-save. So, I mean, they could pick the most sparsely populated area, but it's not going to affect the area that you're going to preserve as a percentage of the lot or the percentage of the trees. That's a very good question.
Any further questions?
I have one more.
Yep.
Y'all are going to kick me out. Okay, so I want to know the height requirement on townhomes. I have some information here. Does that, that height requirement, is it front, would be, would it be measured from the original topographical elevation or from the graded elevation?
I believe it would be graded. Let me see how we've got that defined.
I think the concern with that is they fill up, you know, property, maybe an existing home, they fill it up and then put a townhouse, and now all of a sudden, it towers over.
Which is the same.
As I figure.
It does, it's from, and I believe this is how it's currently measured, but it's from the average level of the finished surface of the, so adjacent grade, adjacent to the exterior walls to the highest point of the building.
So it's from the graded elevation is what you're saying, okay. And one, how could that be looked into in the future? By, I guess, the plat?
Well, I think, now, what you're probably wanting to look for is if, like, having some kind of provision in there or an exception that, you know, staff can scrutinize it more if, it's if an excessive cut of fill required to get to that elevation.
Right, if there's an excessive elevation.
I think we could probably come up with some language to give staff the flexibility to make that determination. And I guess I would also wonder how it, how that plays into the stormwater ordinance and how it's...
I'm sorry, I missed that part.
How, I wonder how that, the, the level of fill, how that, how the stormwater ordinance plays into that. Because I don't know much about stormwater ordinance, and I don't know how much they'd be allowed to fill a property. If that, I don't know if that makes any difference, Mark. Does it limit how much fill you can put on a lot?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't limit how much fill you can put on it as long as slopes are not arro- arrogental.
Okay, okay, so that wouldn't have anything to do with it. We can look at some, some language, I think. I've definitely seen that in some other communities. So we can, we can take a look at what we can add there.
Especially when you're backing up to an established neighborhood. And the only thing that the housing part has to, that's even helping them, and it's not a help, is, is just a six-foot ugly wooden fence. And when you're looking at 50 feet plus, plus, I think there's nine.
No, if I, if I, if I'm thinking the right spot there, I think what it was was kind of like golf course in the townhome. And then in order for them to sewer it, they had to raise the site to do it. And then you had, so they were sitting on eight feet of fill, and then they had the townhouse.
A three-story.
Is that right? Is that right?
Pretty close.
Pretty close. So that's, so that's the thing. So, you know, if it was townhouse going up against a, you know, yeah, okay, so you have your regular height. But if they're putting it on top of it, eight foot fill, then all of a sudden, it's just, you know, it's towering over.
At least rather than extra story tall.
Yeah, that's almost like an extra story.
Yeah, you're right, eight feet of fill, that's awful.
Throw in flooring and, you know, 10 feet together.
And then, yeah, so then the only buffer you have is the six-foot wooden fence that really just blocks the slope.
Well, all but two feet of it.
Where did the 15% commercial come from?
So I'm sure that that was one that we pulled from Charlotte Mecklenburg.
I just hear the complaints. All commercial property 15% less valuable.
One more, the tree. Any further questions?
I, I, okay. You talked about the LID incentives, but when I read this, I didn't actually, or maybe it's me, I just don't, I don't actually see what the incentive is.
The only one I paid attention to is the 15%, the reduced lot size.
I mean, it talks about development rate may reduce minimum parking ratio by up to 10%. And it talks about maximum height may be increased 10%. But, I mean, is that, I mean, it's just these, I guess, is it just these four things here?
Yes.
It's tough to know whether those are significant enough to incentivize LID. But honestly, that was kind of the best that we were able to find. We looked at some other communities to see what other folks offered, and this is generally consistent with it. But certainly, if they, if you have any input on something that might better incentivize the use of LID, you'd definitely be open to understanding that.
Reduce fees and quicker than times.
I do.
Well, and that does play into, I know the county had the stormwater district feasibility report done. And I don't, as far as I know, you haven't instituted implemented stormwater fees yet. But that's probably a big one, is waiving or reducing stormwater fees. But we can't, can't do that until the county has stormwater fees.
We'll waive that.
We'll delay implementing fees as long as you do this.
So can we go back, I think it's one of the, earlier, is the block length? I understand the need for having the block length, and for the most part, I think it's fairly reasonable, with the exception of AGC. Most of the time, you know, AGC, we're talking five-acre lots. So the block width is going to be fairly large. You're not going to have a lot of 100-foot-wide lots there. So, you know, you're probably looking at 300 to 400 feet. You know, so a block would only, you know, have three or four homes then. I just, they, you know, in that case, is that something that, for AGC, with it being so sparse, you know, it is the least designated zoning district in the county. Is that something we can look at increasing?
Yeah, I think that's a great point. So these only apply for single-family residential subdivisions. But yeah, you're right, and...
As I'm saying, it's in AGC, you can only do single-family.
Right.
Yeah, it probably made more sense in the old AGC, when you can do one-acre lots.
Correct, yeah, when you could do one-acre lots back then, the 1,200 would have, the 1,200 would work if you had the...
Right, but now if it's a five-acre minimum, to get that lot configuration, they're usually pretty, let's see, a pretty large. And they don't, if you do that, they don't, they're not a five-acre.
No, they really, they don't really do that. They really try to square them up as much as they can. That's why you don't even see a lot of cul-de-sacs with them, because they lose...
We're just not like getting them anymore.
Yeah.
We're just getting large, like, seven, 10-acre, you know.
Yeah, they do the one, yeah, they do all the one-acre lots and then the 15 acres behind it.
Even not in AGC anymore.
Oh, yeah, you can't even do that.
They can't do that in AGC anymore.
So do you think it makes sense to just remove it from AGC or increase the maximum block?
Well, we could, you could potentially always get one. So I probably, you probably would want to have a maximum.
We can grab some flats and kind of see what looks, what makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, with five-acre lots, you truly might not have what you consider a block.
Yeah, yeah.
Most of the time, is it going to be, you know, just to have, is it, you know, maybe it is 2,000 feet of, you know, one road in, one road out.
So you know the lot width is 100 feet, but yeah, with a five-acre minimum.
They don't do that.
They do have 100-foot lots.
The only, the only large lot, one I can think of, is St. Andrews.
And are they all five acres?
If you go up to Mecklenburg County, you have the sanctuary, they're all three of them. So that could be kind of a good idea, what the blocks are like, likewise. Any further questions? Concerns, comments, of course.
Anything else, Matt?
The first slide about the post office. So that's, you know, those are great, I'm in favor of it. I guess the question is, and maybe this is for the post office, is there a maximum number that can go in one location? Or does it, after they hit a number, do they have to split it up into so many?
Some of the clusters?
Yeah. Point being, it's like, you know, that's okay then if, you know, if development requires maybe two or three or something. But what if you have a development that's going to potentially expand later on? Can they expand that one area? Or do they, or is that a question really for the post office?
You know what, Mark? There is a, they, in their guidance document for these cluster units and so forth, they do have a maximum number.
Okay.
But I would, I would probably say that, yes, it would be the postal office would decide on that.
What's roughly the maximum, just?
I don't know, I guess I hope you're talking about maybe 150 units or something like that.
Actually, some of them, I think almost all of them there, entire neighborhood, or stuff like at the clubhouse, they'll have all of their, their seeds right there.
Okay.
But I think they are trying to do, I think you were right on the 150, because I think they're trying to make them reasonably walkable.
Yes, I think there is a distance. That's part of their guidelines, it's there, it's about just about taking, is how many they will let be on each kind of, I guess, cluster stand, for want of a better term.
Because it's trying to reduce people driving in a neighborhood from their home to the mailbox.
And having that become like a huge traffic.
You'd have to designate parking places for the mailbox cluster.
I don't like them either.
The postal delivery, but it's not like, I mean, they're...
Really?
Really.
Point of contention, totally with the unions, yeah.
I figured that's...
Yeah, I figured they liked it.
Now they're expected to do more, you know, deliver to more addresses and...
Yeah.
Something about the sizing of them and people will pick up their stuff. You end up with issues and stuff and slide down to the mailbox.
Well, like where my daughter lives, she has, I mean, they can, they have to take the key from the package box at the bottom and put it in her mailbox. Well, if the person doesn't see the key, that package stays there.
Yeah, like I have a P.O. box, I have a little one. And when I get a big package, they throw the key in for the big one. And then I just leave the key, I have to leave the key in there. It's easy, it's an easy system. I'm done now.
You're done? Anybody else?
That's Matt's section of the meeting.
I know what I asked.
All right, so do you guys have anything further? Or you want to kind of take what we've all talked about, throw it on the website? Let us know when it's up there, we'll kind of review everything and then...
Yeah, I think at this point, probably because there's some outstanding questions, and then there's some provisions that are potential good suggestions that we could have incorporated. So the planning commission might entertain a motion to defer decision on the recommendation to a date certain, probably. I would, I would suggest the regular December meeting or another date if you want to have another special call meeting to have outside of the regular agenda. But that would be my suggestion.
Okay, I, yeah, I think the December, and then if for whatever reason we're not ready, we can defer it again, but that should, I think, give enough time to get everything answered and then...
Can we also have a meeting with the development community between now and then?
At least, well, we've had the module meetings and invited the development community. I personally emailed all of the local builders and the local builders association. For whatever reason, not a lot of them participated in those public meetings, the modules. We're going to continue to have some input on the LDM. So look for those in November. We'll probably have a builder meeting and an engineer meeting to get some impact, some input on that as well. But as far as meeting with the builders...
Yeah, that's, no, that's what I'm saying, you can have a builder meeting, an engineer meeting. That's, that is, you know, they get, I know they get the emails, but I know they, as quickly as they get them, they don't read them.
They can still watch the videos, they're still online, everything would have been.
I know, but that's, even, that's too much time for them to sit and watch it. It, I, I don't know. For me, I think as a group, they feel, I think they feel more comfortable just coming in, hearing what you have to say, and then complaining about it.
You meant feedback, right?
All right, so do we have a motion?
To defer.
To defer until...
To the first December meeting.
Right, so you're making that motion?
And I will second.
Matt seconds that motion, all in favor. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Awesome, all right. All, well, you have two seconds, you can give Aubrey your... All in favor, we are adjourned.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you guys.
Great feedback.